Silence my cellphone real quick here. All right, good morning, welcome to our commission meeting for August 5th, 2025. I formally call our meeting to order and note for the record that we have a quorum of members present. Again, silence your cellphone, and if you're going to speak today, I see Mr. Canari signing in, thank you, please sign in so we have record. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so I'd look for a motion to approve the agenda. So move.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add the following item to the agenda as item 10, authorize the chairperson to sign the Vended Meal Contract Amendment with Summit Foods. This needs consideration and approval of the contract prior to August 15th. So since we don't have a meeting next week, I'd ask for a second so that Jamie can present the item later in the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the agenda discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We have an amended agenda, I would look for a motion to approve our agenda as amended. So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Our agenda is approved. All right, moving on to our consent agenda, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on any item on the consent agenda? All right, moving on then, before I ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda, one of the items on there is under number six, Certified Appraiser Assessment. So we have Chris Lilla here, we want to recognize one of the employees of the Director of Equalization Office.
Good morning, Commission, Chris Lilla, Equalization Director, with Cassandra De High, one of our appraisers, just want to recognize her, she started with our office about six years ago as a clerk, a property tech for us, worked with the public and everything, and we had an opening for an appraiser position, and she put in and obviously was selected, and the rigorous training that goes into that, to succeed and pass the state certification, there's five courses that need to be passed, a land module, a cost module, a market module, an income module, and then a whole module, it's not an easy self-paced coursework that you do. At the conclusion of that, then she has to pass the state testing with an 80% or better, and then she becomes a certified appraiser, and then there's additional education, every five years she has to attend three schools, three conferences, 12-hour continuing education, ethics training, use path, all of that, so just want to recognize her and her abilities, and she's doing wonderful for us, and I was told to say that she's my favorite employee. Did I say that right? So, no, she's wonderful, and so we just want to take the time to recognize her.
Congratulations, Cassie, self-paced and a lot of self-discipline, so congratulations on that, so, any comments?
Not really.
No, okay, well, congratulations. All right, look for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second, call the roll.
Blenberg?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to regular business, first item is a briefing on policy change for federal contract compliance. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. I'm here today to provide a briefing on some proposed changes to the department head policies and procedures manual and our handbook. All of the changes relate to our affirmative action plan language. You might be aware that earlier this year, an executive order 14173 was signed by President Trump rescinding affirmative action under the previous executive order 11246. So the intent behind all these changes is simply to ensure that we're complying with those guidelines on affirmative action, so it removes any language about compiling an affirmative action plan document under EO 11246. I want to clarify, of course, that this doesn't do anything to change the county's commitment to nondiscrimination or anti-harassment, all those policies are still in place. Also, we'll remain compliant with any guidelines that we have for nondiscrimination and for our guidelines for veterans and individuals with disabilities, so there's no change in the intent behind this, it's just removing any of the affirmative action plan guidelines that we're currently following in relation to executive order 11246. If there are no questions or concerns, we could bring this back to you on August 19th to request your approval.
All right, we'll take public comment on this briefing, anybody from the public like to address the commission on this briefing on our contract compliance? Commission, any questions? Just a briefing, no action, so thank you, Carrie, August?
19th.
19th, thank you. Moving on to a briefing on proposed changes related to the county's compensation and benefit study.
A frequently discussed topic over the past year, this all started approximately a year ago, when the county contracted with McGrath Human Resources Group for conducting a compensation and a benefit study. Over the course of the past year, department heads, employees have been actively involved in providing information. The last six months have been predominantly analysis of that information and recommendations. You'll probably recall that Dr. McGrath was before you in March presenting the findings of our study, and in early June, the commission approved implementing the salary ranges recommended by Dr. McGrath for our non-union, non-elected employees. What wasn't done at that point in time was any discussion about how we would implement it, so while the ranges and the position titles were approved, we haven't yet discussed how we're actually going to transition our employees onto that pay plan. We've talked a lot about the purpose of the studies to make sure that we're maintaining ranges and benefits that are competitive with the market, and this is mostly about our positions and our county position overall. It's not necessarily about the individuals on the pay plan, but of course, we'd have to transition them. So today, I'm here before you asking for support ultimately of how we would implement the pay plan, and then also some benefit changes. Just like the previous item, the intent behind today is to provide you with a briefing, and then if there are no questions or concerns, we would come back on August 19th asking for your approval. I want to say upfront that communication with employees would occur if there's support for this, so we do have a plan for rolling out communication and getting information to them, but as a quick, brief overview, there are really four main components I want to cover with you today. First is the pay plan implementation. Again, this is all about how to transition employees onto the new pay matrix, and when we're talking about the pay matrix, we're talking about full-time, non-elected employees. So like we have a pay matrix now, we would have a pay matrix in the future, it's been different and set hopefully to represent market and equity with our internal positions. The proposals that we would implement that still on September 27th, and all employees would not have a pay cut, obviously, so we want to stress that there's no reduction in pay for employees. What would happen is we would place them on the step closest to, but higher than their current rate of pay in the pay matrix. And then, depending on what type of percentage increase that was for the individual, if it's more than a 2.5% to be placed on the step, they may have their step date reset to September 27th of next year. And the question is, why would we do that? It's all about making sure that now that we're transitioning to a pay matrix, we'll have a couple people maybe who might be placed on the same step, even though right now they're different steps. So adjusting that step increase makes sure that nobody who's currently paid more right now than maybe a coworker or colleague with the same position title would all of a sudden next year be paid less, so it's all about ensuring equity. We've talked a lot about this is a nice step for the county as a whole to move to this new pay matrix, but a lot of your employees will be near the base pay ranges. In fact, about 20% would be at step one. So the next proposal for this plan is to alleviate some of that compression, meaning at least getting those people off step one and move to step two, that you would provide one step adjustment for everybody after that placement. I want to highlight that you will have some employees who are currently over the top of the maximum for their position, it's rare, but it does happen. For those individuals, we have that same equity issue that we would have with people going through the same step, so here too, we would recommend that we reset the step date for anybody who's over the top of the matrix right now or under the new pay plan. And in recognition that third step would be delayed until September 27th of next year, we're asking for support for a one-time $500 lump sum payment, so a small amount to recognize that their step is going to be delayed. Any questions on that before I move to handbook changes that would be necessary for implementation of the cap plan? Our current handbook references our current pay matrix structure, so we reviewed the compensation sections of the handbook, and are recommending some changes and additions where it is attached to your agenda materials. The most substantial adjustments really come down to this area. Right now, promotions are between a 5% to a 12% increase, just because of the structure of the matrix, we're recommending that proposal move to 2.5 to a 5.5% increase for a one-pay grade promotion, and then retain that 5 to 12 for the other promotions. We're also suggesting edits for our demotion section, which would establish a method for determining what step somebody would be at and what their step date would be in cases of both voluntary and involuntary demotions. We're also recommending an adjustment to the overtime and compensatory time section to limit the amount of compensatory time a person could have on the books from 90 hours to 60 hours. So basically, they could still work 40 hours of overtime and a lot compensatory time. One other item that was recommended in this area by Dr. McGrath's study is that we look at a change to our on-call pay. This impacts just a few people across campus, the on-call departments are IT, facilities and human services, somebody is always carrying a phone in that area just in case there's an emergency, and right now, they receive $20 a day in recognition that they're carrying a phone at all hours. Under this proposal, we would ask for support to move from $20 to $40 an hour just for weekends and holidays. So $20 per day would stay there, but it would move to $40 per day for weekends and holidays. And those are the changes that we're asking for effective September 27th. Any questions on those?
I have one, Carrie, so I'm IT and I get a call, it's on a weekend, and I'm being paid the 40 bucks or whatever, and I have to go onto my computer and do something to make somebody's email work or whatever.
Yes, exactly.
Am I paid addition to that 40 for that time I work?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, you're also paid for any hours that you work on the weekend.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
All right.
When is action on this?
Action on all these items is for your consideration, we're planning to schedule that on August 19th.
Thank you. Public comment on this briefing?
Got two other sections, if I could just briefly cover those.
Please, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Didn't mean to get ahead of you.
Okay. We're also asking for support for employee handbook changes effective December 20th. You might be asking, why are you before and me now on a December 20th item, and this is because this all has come out of McGrath's study. As they reviewed our benefit structure, they had some recommendations to our time off, they're recommending the addition of additional holidays, so we're recommending implementing President's Day as a declared holiday, and making adjustments to our paid time off program. Under the proposal that's in front of you and the handbook revisions that are attached to your agenda item, nobody's PTO would go down. We are recommending a change in approach for newly hired employees after December 20th, where they would be fronted 40 hours of leave, and then their accrual would be 3.46. So the total accrual over the year, the total benefit wouldn't change, but they would receive 40 hours up front. Of course, there's a caveat with that, that if they were to leave within the first year, those first 40 hours wouldn't be paid out. And then we recognize that we would have some employees who maybe were hired later this fall, who are still within their first year of employment, their accruals would not go to the 3.46. Instead, we would move them to the second year accrual rate, so they're not losing benefits either. The structure behind this is follows, again, recommendations from McGrath's study and provides an improved paid time off benefit program for our employees. The last adjustment in that benefit section that we're looking at is for extended sick leave. We call that extended sick leave, you're probably familiar with our program, that what that really is intended to be is a safety net for employees who have serious long-term health conditions, or they're caring for a family member with a serious health condition. That's an additional accrual that's there for them in those more serious situations, we're recommending a slight change in the accrual rate from 1.85 to 2.5, so basically two additional days a year. The last thing I want to get before you is part of the study also looked at our variable hour and our seasonal pay, so we would like support for changing those pay ranges for next year. This too, we're not recommending implementation until December 20th, but because some of this does have some payroll impact, we want to make sure that current budgets can absorb it, we think for the most part, they will. But what we're recommending are these pay ranges for the six different levels of variable hour, in other words, part-time, non-benefit eligible employees, and seasonal employees. One thing I'd want to highlight about that is transitioning any variable hour pay employees onto this new range, doesn't really require too much of an adjustment for level A or level B. Level C is going up a little bit more than 5%, so we would ask for support that this year only, we would be able to provide slightly larger increases to make sure people were at least making that base, and that we were maintaining equity in that structure. Again, I just want to highlight that I know that employees probably will have a lot of questions about this, we will certainly be getting additional information out through department heads, to employees, position lists, pay grade ranges, we've asked employees not to come to determinations yet about what their titles will be, because some of them will be changing, but we want everyone to know that there is a communication plan for that, and if this is ultimately approved on August 19th, we will start working to get that rolled out. And we will also be offering to department heads to have someone from our group come in and explain it in case staff have questions, we'll also have examples out there, so we do have a plan in place for that. Any questions for me?
Mr. Chair, good morning, Carrie.
Good morning.
Can I throw you a softball here?
Okay.
What we're talking about this morning applies to the employees that are not a part of the union, correct?
Correct. The Deputy's Association Union Contract was approved earlier, and of course, their benefits and pay are governed by that, and then hopefully, at some point, you'll see the Highway Union Contract coming forward as well.
Okay. And kind of the follow-up, I know we've talked about this on several meetings, and kind of sort out what we're paying our employees and looking at benefits down the road, maybe you can, for the benefit of the public, discuss what spurred this conversation to begin with? I know these conversations and the plan to do the study were initiated before I was elected.
Yep, and thank you for that question. This really comes down to making sure that we're competitive with other employers of like size and like structure. In other words, we're comparing to other government entities, and then we're also looking internally. The reason we were doing this is it's a good idea to review periodically, and it's been, I think the last time we did a classification study was in 2007, so it's been a long time since we've looked at that internal equity of our positions, and the last time we did a pay review was also eight to 10 years ago, so it's a good practice just to do this. Ultimately, we all know that 2020 had a lot of pay changes, the county did not go through comp study at that point in time, you know that since that time, we've had a marked increase in our turnover, so we want to make sure that we're finding the right balance between pay and benefits, so that we're being mindful frankly of the taxpayers' funds and how we're supported, but also offering benefits and pay at a competitive enough level that we're not losing money from having that turnover level.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, public comment on this agenda item? All right, it is again a briefing to be brought back in two weeks on the 19th, so we'll have more discussion at that point, thank you, Carrie. A second reading to consider adoption of ordinance MC 6925 defining residency requirements for appointment to the Minnehaha County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Where Meredith?
Morning Commissioners, Meredith Jerko with the Commission Office. As stated, this is the second reading, and asking the Commission to consider adoption of this ordinance. As we discussed at the last commission meeting, the HRC Housing Redevelopment Commission was established in 2010, and it oversees the, it oversees Safe Home, which is a housing-first program, and this commission is comprised of one Minnehaha County Commissioners, as well as four community members, often with experience in housing, financial services, and other related industries. So this ordinance would allow for no more than, would allow for at most two Commissioners on the HRC to be non-residents of Minnehaha County, given that they reside in a directly adjacent county. Just as a reminder, in the past, we have had a pool of applicants that do work in this industry in Minnehaha County, but might not necessarily live within the county, and we've had applicants interested, but they're unable to apply because they are not Minnehaha residents. And as a reminder of how the process works, we will receive, we will post a, post on our website that we are soliciting for applications, we'll receive those applications, and that pool of applicants will come before the commission, so this body still gets the final say in who is appointed when there is a vacancy. Our next opening is in November of this year, so we will be posting that on the website soon, and then we also have one coming up in the spring of '26. So I will stand by for any questions you have.
Thank you, Meredith. Public comment on this agenda item? Commission, questions, action?
Mr. Chair, just one quick question, Meredith, are the members of this board paid for their service, or is it purely volunteer?
Purely volunteer.
And how many members are on the committee?
Five. So one is a Minnehaha County Commissioner, so that's currently Commissioner Benega, and then there are four community members that serve five-year-long terms, and they're allowed to serve two terms.
Need a motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
Additional comments? Call the roll.
Benega?
Aye.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blenberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Moving on to our added agenda item, motion to authorize the chairperson to sign the Vended Meal Contract Amendment with Summit Foods by Mr. Grabett. Good morning, Jamie.
Good morning, Jamie Grabett, Director of JDC. Before you this morning, I'm asking you to authorize the First Amendment of four that are allowed to our contract with Summit Foods to provide our food service as part of the National School Lunch Program. The importance of this is we've been working hard to get this accomplished, we got the information late Friday night, so that's why we had to do the late addition to the agenda. The increase this year will be 3.7%, we utilize the CPI from February every year to come up with that amount, so I'd ask for your approval of this contract amendment.
Thank you, Jamie. Public comment on this contract? Commission, turn it to you for questions, action?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, please call the roll.
Kipley?
Aye.
Blenberg?
Aye.
Heisey?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to public comment, we allow speakers five minutes, a total of 30 minutes, I see Scott from the fair is here, I'm going to give you the floor first, it's a busy week and you got a lot going on, Scott.
Yes, good morning, thank you for the time, Scott Wick, Sioux Empire Fair, WH Line Fairgrounds, we're halfway through the 2025 fair, been very fortunate with favorable weather, I think there's a little bit of rain for it, we had a few spring, it was kind of soft for them to set up because we had a bunch of rain right after the Rock to Country, but we've had concerts Saturday, Sunday, Monday, we have musical acts in the grandstand all the way through Thursday, and then we have a Bulls and Bronx rodeo event Friday, and two performances of a rodeo Saturday. So it's been going very well, the curfew still does a good job, and the young folks have been very well behaved, we had a little skirmish the other night, unfortunately, some girls wanted to start causing problems, and then their boyfriends jumped in, but law enforcement took care of it, it happens when you get that many people. But overall, it's been very smooth, we have senior lunch sponsored by Wellmark today, and then tomorrow, of course, is Egg Appreciation Day, we'll serve between 2,500 and 3,000 people. So it's been a very good fair, carnival's looking good, we've got 38 rides, and we're just going to hopefully finish strong. Attendance is pretty par for last year, but it appears that spending is up once in the property, so we're pretty pleased with the way things are going right now. I've talked to Mark Trenz already, we've got a major rodent situation with gophers and all the gopher holes out there, and I, we're going to devise a plan to try, and we need to eradicate those because it's just a matter of time until somebody gets hurt. At one time, we did hire a company and they did a treatment plan on, there was 1,800 holes, it took them two days, and it didn't do anything. So we have hired a trapper in the past that's trapped them to try and get rid of them, but there must be some super breed that's out there because we can't seem to get rid of them. Gerald, you see when you come out from meetings, there's times you look out, and it looks like the ground's moving, but I talked to Mark already, he's going to try and devise a plan. So other than a bunch of gopher holes out there, that's a pretty small problem in the big scope of running a fair, so we're very pleased with the way things are going, and we thank you very much for your support, and that, I will come back next week after the fair's over and give you a wrap-up on that.
Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you.
You bet, good luck the rest of the week. All right, moving on to other public comment.
Gary Meyer, before I get started, Joe, you doing okay on oxygen over there?
Mr. Meyer, address your comments to the entire commission, please.
I know you're ruled, you don't need to lecture me, please don't. I am here today to present yet more information regarding elections. Members of the South Dakota canvassing team have been investigating the equipment being used in our elections, and to inform you that ESNS has provided uncertified election management system laptops since at least 2018. Four counties in South Dakotas have the election management system. This is the system that unencrypts the CVRs that are produced by the tabulators that count our votes. The EMS software is supposed to run on what is called a hardened computer, or another term is a computer not connected to the internet. All four of these counties are running an unapproved laptop. Through FOIA request, we obtained a copy of the purchase order from Minnehaha County from the laptop purchased in March of 2024. This new laptop that ESNS sold in Minnehaha County is not on the list of certified machines, according to the EAC, the Election Assistance Commission. Auditor Anderson presented these findings in a press release at the June 18th, 2024 commission meeting, but nothing more happened. Per South Dakota codified law 12-17B-2, it states that each system shall fulfill the requirements for the EAC standards, certification, and be approved by the Board of Elections prior to distribution and use in our state. So if the laptop used in the 2024 election wasn't on the EAC list, then it is safe to say it wasn't approved by the South Dakota Board of Elections either. Also included in this same law, 12-17B-2, it states that no automatic tabulating, electronic ballot marking, or election voting equipment system may be connected to the internet. It is worth noting that according to the purchase order, the laptop that was purchased in March of 2024 comes with a built-in Wi-Fi and Bluetooth capabilities. It shows on the invoice a dual-band wireless card. This laptop is the hardened standalone workstation and is not to have any internet connectivity per, again, this same law, 12-17B-2. The models certified by the EAC are approved because they do not possess any internet capabilities. This model being used in Minnehaha County is not on the EAC list, and it contains components that make it capable to connect to the internet. Another point to mention is that by approving the purchase of this uncertified piece of equipment, you have violated HAVA requirements by spending HAVA funds on non-compliant equipment. HAVA is the Help America Vote Act. So regarding the 2024 laptop purchase, it has the capabilities of being connected to the internet, so how do we know it wasn't? Is there anybody in this county that can prove it was not? Commissioner Karski and Commissioner Benega have been on this commission since we started bringing this forward in 2021. Auditor Kite told us repeatedly that this equipment was not connected to the internet. Well, the laptop used for the 2020 and the 2022 election was not, is also not a certified piece of equipment either, and if that machine wasn't on the certified EAC list, it could have been too, it could have been connected too because it contained a Wi-Fi or Bluetooth card. ESNS needs a minimum of three elected officials on each county commission's court to adopt, contract, and pay millions of tax dollars for election services and equipment. The stakes are very high for ESNS. Their profit margins depend Their profit margins depend on the right people getting elected. So even if you are against us, the truth continues to come out.
Good morning, Cindy Meyer, Minnehaha County. And this is such an important piece of information that I just wanna repeat it for you. HAVA, the Help America Vote Act, is federal funds. When you agree to the use of those federal funds, you have to agree to comply by the rules, and those rules are made by the EAC. The EAC, Election Assistance Commission, was formed to make the voluntary voting system guidelines. These guidelines are voluntary, but when you use the money, you have to follow their guidelines. And those guidelines require the use of certified equipment. South Dakota adopted these guidelines into law, so they are no longer voluntary, but they are the law. So if you use federal money, you promise to use the money to purchase certified equipment. The EAC, Election Assistant Commission, certifies the equipment that can be used to run the ESNS EMS, Election Management System software. That certified equipment is the equipment that ESNS should be selling to their customers when they order, order a certified laptop to run the EMS software. But in the case of Minnehaha County, that's not what ESNS provided. Again, Auditor Anderson presented this to the commission in her press release on the June 18th, 2024 meeting, that the laptop that ESNS sent to the county was not on the list of certified equipment. EAC certification has been adopted into South Dakota state law and HAVA funds have been used to purchase the equipment. ESNS has intentionally sent illegal equipment that's potentially internet-connected and people have no idea what's going on. You broke your own rules. You signed your name on the dotted line. You gave the approval to sign the check that bought this equipment, and that equipment was not EAC certified. Every election conducted on that laptop has been out of compliance with the South Dakota codified law, and therefore it is illegal. Maybe to put this another way, the elections that you sign off on during the canvas of the vote are not legal because the equipment being used is not certified, and that is against South Dakota codified law. ESNS set you up and fooled you all into believing that they were operating above the law. This billion-dollar for-profit company is corrupt, and you have violated our civil rights as a result of it. You have allowed laws to be violated. This isn't a conspiracy. We have the receipts. You are in serious violation of the civil rights of all the constituents of this county. And just remember, negligence is no defense.
My name is John Coonery in District 11 of Minnehaha. And I'm here today, like, um, Gary and Cindy Meyer, to speak in part, uh, upon election integrity issues. And we as residents who speak on issues that are important to us and the majority of the people in Minnehaha County and across South Dakota, as our God-given natural and constitutional rights say we can, and leaders in municipalities, counties, state, and federal government are servants of the people. Our wonderful state motto, we hear this, but we've, we really have to consider what it means. Under God, the people rule. We all are accountable to our Creator, and our leaders are accountable to us as the people. We're here to responsibly petition our government to redress the grievances of certain election systems not meeting the requirements under the law. For example, as Cindy and Gary Meyer have and others have in the past, um, expressed that they're on certified laptops, as she just said, that is a violation. And, um, but there are other things that have yet to be redressed. And this must be corrected. Fortunately, during the 2025 South Dakota legislative session, due to the hard work of many of these same people and others who aren't here, who have been doing this for going on five years, brought issues to our legislature, our legislators, and they listened. And, and of the 20 bills related to elections that were passed, there were at least nine that will have important impacts to help reduce the possibility of people that shouldn't be voting, that aren't residents of South Dakota, to keep them from, uh, voting. Um, and one area of that is UUCAVA, which is a federal program, and I understand that. But we all have a voice, we have a voice to petition our federal, um, legislators. And under that UUCAVA system currently, we've seen impacts in South Dakota, right here in Minnehaha County, right here where we stand, District 15. Um, because we were here, my wife, who cannot be here, and I and others were here when Joni Cheddar's race was recounted, and her attorney asked, under South Dakota law, as should be, the UUCAVA ballots to come in one stock that are transcribed into the stock that can go through the tabulators, be called out verbally. And we heard of those 427 UUCAVA mail-in absentee ballots, most of which use mail forwarding addresses as, as their address, not just their mailing address. We heard, we heard 90% of those went for the Democratic Eric Muckey over Jo, Jody Cheddar in a seven-vote, nearly tie election. We've heard the same thing out of, uh, close races in Arizona. So someone, somewhere is using that, and so that is something that has yet to be redressed. We must prove, um, these people will have to prove eventually, I believe, who they actually are in order to vote. Many of us, some of them of us sitting here or standing here, have served our country in our military to defend our God-given natural and constitutional rights. In time of war and time of peace, we can do no less. We expect and deserve, like all American citizens, to be heard and treated with respect by our elected officials as we show respect to them and we bring concerns to our elected representatives concerning elections, property rights, and many other important issues. With that, I thank you.
Good morning. Um, I'm Jean Childs and I live in Minnehaha County. There's absolutely no logical, ethical reason to use corrupt ESNS tabulators. Hand-counted ballots is the only way. It is not too late to turn around and do the right thing for we, the people. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Karski and fellow Commissioners. My name is Don Marie Johnson, I live in Minnehaha. I serve on the Sioux Falls School District School Board. Thank you for allowing me to address you today and your continued service to our community. As local elected officials, we share something unique. We serve alongside people whose children play in the same sports team as ours, who we see at the grocery store on Saturday mornings, and who sit next to us at community events. This isn't abstract governance, this is neighbors serving neighbors. We're part-time public servants trying to make full-time impacts while balancing day jobs, families, and our own place in this community. When we make difficult decisions, we know we'll face those affected by, those affected by them the next school concert or at church service. Constituency voice matters in our community, and their participation in our democratic process makes us all better. So I do appreciate the voices here today. I know property taxes are on everyone's mind right now. All of a, all of our local government entities, county, city, schools, are facing the same challenges with rising costs and limited resources. When a family struggles with their tax bill, they don't think, oh, that's a county issue or that's a school issue. They think, that's my issue. They deserve leaders who focus on efficiency and avoid duplicating efforts wherever possible. Moving forward, I believe we can eliminate inefficiencies by better coordination between our governing bodies and working with our state legislators on sustainable solutions. The current system requires us to find ways to do more with less, and I'm committed to being part of that effort. I want to highlight some examples of how this coordination already works. Todd Veek, our business manager at the Sioux Falls School District, served on the county's financial action network. Um, and recently, Commissioner Kipli and I, along with another school board member, met at the Sulan Library to discuss partnership opportunities. These conversations show we can do more together than apart. This extends just beyond county and school district. Our city grows. I see opportunities coordinate with city council to avoid duplication of services. With the new prison coming to Sioux Falls, we can work together between county, city, and school district to manage impacts efficiently rather than each entity handling things separately. I want to acknowledge and thank the auditor office for the professional handling of recent petition process regarding our school's opt-out. The morning after learning there weren't sufficient signatures to refer the opt-out, I posted an open letter emphasizing that this process reflects the health of our democracy. I know the conversations around local issues have been intense lately. I certainly feel it. That passion comes from a good place. We care deeply about our community, and we care deeply about hard-earned tax dollars. As your local elected officials, we have a responsibility to model that kind of respectful dialogue that honors both that passion and our shared commitment to this place we all call home. Whether you support every decision we make or not, please know we're your neighbors first and your elected officials second, and we're doing our absolute best to serve you well. Thank you for your time and service. I look forward to continuing to work together for everyone who calls Minnehaha County our home.
And thank you for your service.
Hello, my name is Penny Baybridge, Minnehaha County. As usual, I just came to the meeting not with a message or anything, but just to listen. And I just wanted to, to share with you that, uh, one of my, you know, core values is unless there's evidence to contrary, I assume innocence. And so I believe that everyone up here on this board is doing what you believe is the best thing to do and have in the past, but now you're being presented with evidence showing that perhaps the information you had before for your decisions was maybe not correct. And so, um, I, I appreciate the fact that you're listening and that, uh, going forward, if you can, uh, give attention to these matters to make sure that we are compliant with things, it would, you know, truly show, um, that your intent is honorable and that you accept your sacred duty, uh, to perform, uh, those processes that you have before you. Thank you.
All right, turn it over then to commission liaison reports. Commissioners.
Mr. Chair, I just have one from Planning and Zoning Met, uh, for the month, and we just had, uh, just a couple items of note. I guess at the Joint Body of the City Council and the County Commission, a conditional use permit related to a, uh, wood grinding operation. I know we've had those issues before us out, uh, with the Mueller Palace out at the, uh, west side of town. This one was at the north side of town, but it was not an expansion of their existing operation. They were just, uh, needing more space to store equipment, so it really didn't change their operation. So I don't anticipate that, that was approved, I don't anticipate that getting appealed. And then, uh, we had, uh, expansion of the quarry, uh, out near Corson with Knife River, and that one was a conditional use permit approved as well. And so far, we don't have either of those being appealed to the, uh, County Commission or the Joint Body, City Council, County Commission. But, uh, other than that, pretty uneventful planning and zoning meeting this month. Thanks.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Just wanted to mention that tonight at 6:00 PM, um, at Meldrum Park, the SJC block party will be kicking off again in coordination with, um, the neighborhood block parties that are happening all over town this evening. So, um, good time to get out and spend time with your neighbors. And if any of you are interested in joining, we'll, um, we'll be at Meldrum Park, serving food and, um, inflatables and all kinds of activities for kids.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, just wanted to mention that I'm slated to be serving coleslaw tomorrow morning at, uh, Egg Appreciation Day, um, at the fair at 10:45. Love to see members of the public if you decide to stop by.
And I'd love to be there, but I will be in Olkoma for State Association of County Commissioners Board Meeting, quarterly board meeting, so I won't be able to make that. Um, encourage attendance, definitely at that event, great event, and, um, great way to show support for our egg community. All right, non-action commission discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, just have a couple of comments to make in relation to some of the, um, testimony that was given today during the public comment section, and I do appreciate that the public is, uh, so engaged in the process and is concerned about the integrity, um, of our elections. I would like to see, uh, the evidence that was, uh, referenced in, in their presentation and, um, if it is a fact that some of the election equipment that the county or other counties are using and they're not, that, that would, that are not properly certified, um, I think amendments and changes, um, need to be looked at. Um, I think people should have absolute certainty that the law is not only being followed, but that our elections, um, are secure. Maintaining that public trust is very important. Um, particularly concerning was the reference to the fact that some of our, um, election equipment could be, um, connected to the internet. So again, I'd like to see some evidence, um, in respect to that. The legislature in this last session, um, passed many election integrity-related bills. Um, so it's obviously something that's top of mind on the state level, uh, but also, um, across the state, um, on the general public, and I'd like to see some more clarity, uh, regarding this. That's all.
I'll let you work with their group and you can present later if you wish. I guess I have one item with, um, regard to the United Way, which was brought up a couple of weeks ago, and, you know, should the Minnehaha County be allowing payroll deductions for, um, employees to contribute to the United Way? And as a Heart Club member, meaning $500 a year donator, I, um, have done that for many, many years, um, I want to give my take on the organization because it does have 30 local board members. And these board members are very active in their businesses in the community and very recognizable names. The United Way employs nine people, and they also count on over 700 volunteers to support the, uh, mission of the United Way. Those are all local people. They have a $9.2 million budget and nine, almost 99% of their money stays local. Um, they support 38 agencies with 74 different programs. And to get onto that program, to get your program supported, it's an involved process. Management has to be interviewed, financial statements are reviewed, and a, um, community impact statement has to be included. It passes through, um, reviews by three separate committees. Um, and it's about a six-month process to get on the United Way. It's, it's daunting, and most people don't even want to go through it because it's a microscope. Um, Minnehaha County supports financially several of the same organizations that are supported by the United Way. Juvenile diversion through Lutheran Social Services, great example. Um, I do not or would not support removing the United Way from our employee payroll deduction as a time commitment, from what I understand is extremely small, maybe a few hours a year to set up the deductions and they're just automatically done. Employee involvement for, is on a paid time off basis, they're not using company time to, um, be involved in the United Way organization, it's personal time. Um, I'm personally gonna continue to support the United Way, and I encourage others to do the same thing. So, thank you. Commissioner Benega?
Uh, I would just say, well said. I'm very familiar with, uh, United Way, having worked either with, uh, ag-
either with an agency that benefits by that. I've worked with the allocations group. I've spent hundreds of hours every year putting together the application. I've been part of the management group that reviews those. The thing is, the bottom line, and just I want to add to what you've already very clearly stated, is the fact that one out of every three people in Minnehaha County benefits by United Way, based on their statistical information. I'm convinced that if we were not involved, we would see that same group of people coming to us looking for more services. So I also support United Way. I think it's a very efficient way of frankly establishing a standard in this community that people expect. And with literally hundreds of thousands of people that are affected over the years, it's extremely efficient, and Sioux Falls ought to be proud of the fact that we are usually in the lead, in some cases, of the amount per individual who supports United Way. And I think that's something that we should be very supportive of, rather than complaining about a few hours that payroll may take to put that together as a payroll deduction, which is the easiest, simplest way to make those donations. Thank you.
All right. I want to circle back on one other thing here also. You know, the sheriff wants to buy cars. He recommends to the county commission, I want to buy these patrol cars. They have the stuff I need. We go through a process, making sure he's not buying race cars for his own personal supply or whatever. And same thing with his handguns and bullets. He tells us what he wants to buy. The IT department says, we need to replace computers. These are the computers we need. So this interesting conversation, I'm addressing this to you, Commissioner Heisey. So if you're going to be looking into this allegations that were presented, I guess I'd like to understand more about why the auditor would be recommending illegal equipment to the commission to be purchased. I think it should be part of the process because what I'm hearing is not allegations against the commission, but against the auditor's office for using equipment or processes that are in violation of statute. So I'd like to hear the rest of that story when it comes down to it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Weinberg.
I just had one more thing to add. For non-action commission discussion, just wanted to mention that my subcommittee from the CLEAR Group, which just as a reminder is a group of county commissioners and county officials from all over the state who have been put together by our state association, the subgroups have been meeting, trying to define ways that we can lead with efficient and accountable reform. I've been able to be part of the indigent legal and medical expenses committee, and I know that several of you are on other committees that are working towards similar things. So I just wanted to give a shout out to the state association for helping to organize this, and also to all the people who are helping behind the scenes gather information so that we can present and hopefully make some headway in this group.
All right. Thank you for that. I know it's a lot of extra work, kind of like the few hours of phone calls I had with legislators this last week regarding property tax reform. And I'm sure we're all getting those calls. So they want to understand more about the process, and I appreciate the questions. So, all right. I'm going to look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned.